We're going to call together tonight's regular City Commission meeting for May 20th, 2024. Can you give us a real call to Abbot?
Mary Ann?
Here.
Commissioner Petrie?
Here.
Commissioner Schrieger?
Here.
Commissioner Leach?
Here.
And Commissioner Wollington?
Present.
And tonight for invocation, we would like to invite up Father John Lansworth from St. John Catholic Church.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Heavenly Father, when we focus our attention upon the division present in our nation, how quickly we forget that we are so blessed by you, oh God, to live in this country and to enjoy the freedoms that so many people of the world cannot embrace. We are grateful to you, oh Lord, that citizens of this community of El Dorado can express their voices through the representation of these duly elected commissioners. We are grateful to you, oh Lord, for these commissioners and for the gift of their service to our community and to their staff who work to provide a quality of life for the citizens of El Dorado. One week from today, as citizens of this nation, we are called to remember, we are called to remember the sacrifices of men and women of our military armed forces who gave their very lives so that we may enjoy the freedoms that our nation's citizens embrace. May this Memorial Day not only be a day of picnics, barbecues, boating, and fun, but a day that we give thanks and that we do not forget. A grateful heart silences a complaining voice. As we begin this meeting, we ask for your wisdom, oh God. We pray for peace in our world, peace in our nation, peace in our city, peace in our families, and for peace to dwell in each of our hearts. When we forget you, oh God, we lose direction and divisions widen among us. Bless the work of this City Council, oh God. May their decisions seek to build unity in our city. This we ask in the name of your Son, Jesus Christ, our Lord. Amen.
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 Thank you, Father. Would you all please rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so it doesn't look like we have any proclamations or recognitions tonight. So we're going to move on to personal appearances. Personal appearances are opportunities for organizations or citizens to make special presentations before the City Commission. Such appearances are scheduled in advance of the meeting by calling City Clerk Emerald Ashlon at 316-321-9100 by 5:00 PM the Tuesday preceding the meeting. Presentations are limited to 10 minutes, and any presentations for information purposes only, and no action will be taken. And tonight, we have the Chamber of Commerce. Phil Benedict in the Chamber of Commerce.
Thanks. We'll be quick. This is our quarterly update. And just to remind everybody of the Chamber's missions, to develop and enhance economic vitality of businesses through community leadership, education, advocacy, and relationship development. So far this year, in the days since I last was up here, we held our second Youth Entrepreneurial Challenge for Butler County High Schools. We had 16 business plans that were submitted on February 12th, and they were scored by individuals of our Fuel El Dorado Committee. We had a trade show on February 21st here in El Dorado Civic Center, again judged by the Fuel El Dorado Committee. And we had a winner, and several others actually went on to the Kansas State Entrepreneurial Challenge at K-State. So that was a lot of fun. We held our annual dinner entitled Field of Dreams. We had the acapella group from Butler Community College provide the musical entertainment. Scott Redler from the Redler Culinary Institute and the co-founder of Freddy's, he and I had a fireside chat in front of everybody. Of course, we had representatives from The Walnuts, gave us an update about their season coming up. And then we had some great food, and some of the winners you can see there from our Captain Jack Entrepreneur of the Year, along with our Small Business Award, and some strange guy there won the whatever award it is we gave him. Community Champion, I think it was called. We also facilitated discussion with several businesses in our downtown district and up central, all the way to the industrial park, to understand the effects that homeless have on our El Dorado businesses. We provided a platform for the business community to share their concerns and issues with members of the City Commission. And then we got Humankind Ministries to come and discuss homelessness and the possible solutions with all of you during one of your work sessions. About three weeks ago, we finally have signed our MOU with USD 490 for the Chamber to use the Performing Arts Center to bring concerts to El Dorado, partnering with the Rogue Artist Group out of Tulsa and Out House Ticketing to attract artists to our venue up to six times a year. And we expect to get a little bit of free advertising on Channel 12, as well as 107.9 Radio Real Country. We connected our members with the KTA about the homeless, the cashless tolling about to take effect, and it actually had some effect on some of our trucking businesses. So they had a discussion, was facilitated by the Chamber, and we'll also have a time in June where we'll have free K-Tags to hand out to the community. We again participated in the first two HF Sinclair Community Advisory Panel meetings, and one of our roles is to keep everybody, our business community especially, aware of the turnaround activity that will be occurring this fall and the buildup to it. We participated in the board activities for the turkey hunt in April. That was a very successful hunt. As you can see, Lieutenant Governor Tolan was our featured speaker for our opening night. He also got his first ever turkey. And his assistant got one three minutes later. Different place, different guides, and there's a debate who got the first one. So we'll let them do that. And ended up with Logan Mize at the Strutter Banquet on Saturday night as our entertainment. Held our mayor's prayer breakfast. Mayor was again freaking awesome. And David Lockard was our featured speaker, and David talked about his faith journey through losing his son, and then even less than a year ago from then, losing his wife. And Jason Shire provided the musical entertainment for that event. It was probably the best one I've been to yet. We continued to facilitate a network Kansas heat community loans for El Dorado and all of Butler County, except for Augusta, providing gap financing, financing up to 45K. Our five-year rate is at 3%, and our 10-year rate is at 4%. And we got the bowling alley defaulted to be written off, so we have no more red marks anymore. Continue to nurture Fuel El Dorado, our Young Professionals Group, and support our Celebration of Freedom Committee and our ambassadors. We participate on the Experience El Dorado Advisory Board, and we distribute the new Chamber Gazette to all of our banks, the YMCA, and several other businesses. New members so far this year include The Lanes, along with Frogs, 107.9 South Central Mental Health, Sunflower Care Homes, Holiday and Express came back, Resource Center, KTA, and Air Med Care or Eagle Med. They want to have a ribbon cutting. We still haven't decided on where they'll lend the helicopter, but I did tell them, you can't use the rotary blades to cut the ribbon. We have to use the scissors. We've directed viewers to the base grant project for Central for updates, the link that Scott provided to me, so people can, along with Central, can look at the updates, how that might be affecting their business. We've continued to market and schedule a civic center. Looks like the revenue through May is about it. I don't think we have anything scheduled this week. So that's what it's been so far, and the other numbers for each one of those months are reservations that we currently have on the books. We hope that that'll grow as well as we go forward. However, the conditions outside the building are getting worse. The facade, where the lights are, the sagging even more, water coming through the lights. So that city asset needs a little bit of investment before the things get worse. Coming up, we have our charity softball tournament in June 22nd, our Member Appreciation Lunch, June 28th, and of course, before we know it, we'll be headed to the back-to-school and the new employee breakfast in August. And we'll begin planning our first concert at the Pack. We'll be notifying all of our businesses of the event in advance, so they're prepared. We hope that people will come to town, visit our restaurants, do a little shopping, and we even hope to sell a sponsorship that we can put on the ticket and maybe provide a sale opportunity for them. We'll advertise and begin the new El Dorado Downtown Market. We're going to use the alleys on both sides of the street for artisan markets to draw foot traffic from El Dorado and the region. That's set to begin on June 15th. It'll be every other Saturday, and it's the opposite weekend to the Experience El Dorado's Farmer's Market, so down in East Park, so we don't interfere with that. And the group that has come together and met, they have tons of ideas about how we can bring people to our downtown to shop. It's their ideas, and we talk them through, and if we can help as a Chamber, then we'll do so. Keep the discussion moving on our homeless issue. We continue to get calls from people who want to talk to us about the issues they're having with their business. So I continue to record those, and we'll distribute those again shortly. Continue to engage our Young Professionals Group. They're going to begin, they're meeting up at Frogs on June 6th to talk about the F in fuel. What are the things that you guys want to focus on to help our city and lead us in those discussions? Be hiring a new administrative assistant. Paige is moving on to Kansas City. Her last day is July 19th, and I will miss her. I hope I can find somebody just as good. And then our board will begin to search for a new Chamber Director in the August-September timeframe, and my last day will be August 31st, we hope. That's it. Thanks.
You said August 31st. The screen said October.
I said October 31st, and the screen said October 31st.
I think he meant December.
He meant what?
Yeah.
I think he meant December.
Thanks, Phil.
Well, I was thinking 2027, maybe, October.
So we don't have any other personal... Thank you, Phil. We don't have any other personal appearances. We'll move on to public comment. Persons who wish to address the City Commission regarding items not on the agenda and that are in the jurisdictions, and the City Commission may do so when called upon. Comments on personnel matters and matters pending in court are not permitted. Speakers are limited to three minutes, and any presentations for information purposes only, and no action will be taken. Is there anyone here for personal comment?
I am not familiar with this council. I bought a piece of property, 724 North Topeka. I don't know if that is on the agenda or not.
It is. It's on the agenda tonight.
And I apologize, but if you would just call me one next time, it should be a speech.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you for that. Is there anyone else for public comment?
I'm here in regard to 308 North Taylor.
So that'll be on that same agenda item. We'll have our public hearing then for that. Thank you. Anyone else that we could say no to? I mean, for public comment. We'll call you up here for that. I appreciate it. Thank you for being here, and it'll be agenda item number 11. We'll get...
Thank you.
Yes, sir. So if there's no one for public comment, we will move on to the consent agenda on tonight's consent agenda. We're considering City Commission work session minutes from May 1, 2024, and City Commission meeting minutes from May 6, 2024, approval of the Walnuts CMB license set to expire December 31, 2024, and planning commission appointment for James Barnaby set to expire December 31, 2027. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I move we approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion in a couple of seconds. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Now we have our public hearings, so we're going to move on to the public hearing for the condemnation proceeding. Okay. Wanted to make sure. So this is a public hearing for 434 West Cave Springs, 1108 Sheldon, 308 North Taylor, 724 North Topeka, 616 West Twanda, and 817 North Washington. So open the public hearing, so whichever one of you wants to come on up and get to chat.
My name is William. Last name is Ward. I have, excuse my appearance, I have spent three days, as noted in the record, I live in the state of Washington, so I've driven for three days to get here. I don't remember, and I don't have the paper in front of me as to what this hearing is about. However, I would like to just sign the property over to the city and be done with it. As a matter of fact, I have had nothing but a bad experience in the Midwest, and it's not derogatory to you all because you all regulate. And if there is an issue, I think a solution should be offered as well. Tomorrow, I'm visiting with the FBI office in Kansas City, Missouri for wire fraud, because I did hire and pay for heavy equipment to be delivered to El Dorado. I was going to completely eliminate the house and apply for all the proper permits to have it demoed and all those issues, and then, you know, put up a $60,000 house. At this point in time, I am completely fed up with the mentality of the Midwest. As a general rule, again, not directing it at any of you all, I have experienced nothing but nondisclosure. And for the city of El Dorado, I personally would recommend, because again, I come from the state of Washington, I bought the house online. I would recommend that the city of El Dorado institute a full disclosure policy. What I mean by that is I purchased the property online. After I purchased it, it cost me an additional $900 to have an engineer come and inspect the house and give me an engineerial, an engineer's report. That was not disclosed to me in the sale. And it should have been. I would recommend that the City Council institute some kind of code or ordinance that requires full disclosure in all household sales. I am positive that other people in this area have purchased properties, and there was not full disclosure. Without full disclosure in the sale of a property, and then paying $900 after I purchased a property here in El Dorado that was quote-unquote "good to go," and all I had to do was go in, remodel, clean out, this, that, and the other, and I would be good to go. Now I'm in front of the City Council. If there could be a disclosure ordinance, I purchased title insurance, which was an additional $720. I've got thousands of dollars invested into a piece of property I am willing to sign over with a quick claim deed tonight. I don't care if you tear it down. I don't care if you burn it. I am really tired of people in the Midwest, again, in general, not being honest. And it's really disheartening. I have literally driven from the state of Washington to get here to this meeting today. I brought my wife. She's good company. But if we could resolve full disclosures in the selling of real estate, that would be extremely helpful. And I'm speaking from the heart, because I am really ready to just sign it over and lose thousands upon thousands of dollars, because if the council says condemn it, which probably has already happened, or the building inspectors have already said it's condemned, I know it's uninhabitable. I drove by it, and the stickers are on the doors. But if I would have known that I needed an engineer to go inspect the house, I would never have bought it. And there needs to be some kind of disclosure within the city limits. Again, Washington, West Coast, I completely understand people with the West Coast mentality. We have money. We have this. We have that. We have the other. I know what you all think of me back here.
Which address are you speaking about?
724 North Topeka.
Thank you.
And if the City Council is willing to work with me after I'm done talking with the FBI and the wire fraud case is settled, I will show you absolutely all the documentation to prove where I stand. I will happily condemn or happily remove it at my own expense, as I was willing to. But I can't be sent a notice and continue to do business in the state of Washington and schedule time off to come back here. I can have it demolished, you know, in a 72-hour period. I have no problems with that. I honest to God just need somebody back here in the Midwest willing to work with me. I don't mind. Otherwise, I'd just soon sign a quick claim deed. I have title insurance. That was another $720. So it's free and clear. If you want, I will sign it over tonight.
But I need you to understand that you're willing to tear it down and build a new structure, right?
Absolutely.
Well, then why don't you just do that? Why do you want us to buy it? I guess I'm missing why you want us to buy it if you're willing to tear it down.
No, I don't. I don't want you to buy it.
Or quick claiming it or whatever.
I will gift it.
Well, yeah, but you want to do something to it.
I don't want to be billed by the city for demolition.
Well, if you... My understanding is if you tear it down, we're not going to bill you.
I may not be able to tear it down for another 60 to 90 days. I do not know what the FBI is going to do with the wire fraud, which involves several thousand dollars. That's why I'm going to Kansas City tomorrow. I'm meeting with a special agent for wire fraud, because I paid an individual, I paid them online to demo the house and deliver equipment, and it has not happened. And the guy basically told me I could lump it or leave it because I'm on the West Coast. So if you are going to bill me to demo the house, I'd just soon give it to you.
Okay. I see what you're saying.
I get what you're saying.
Okay.
And, you know, I don't care about sympathy. I drove for three days. I'm going to go grab a hotel and order more pizza tonight on the road and go to sleep. Just let me know. I do not want any additional cost associated with this house, except for legitimate permits to demo it and then rebuild. But I, again, I'm from Washington State, and I need an extension of whatever time is allowed. And I appreciate you all's time and listening.
Thank you for coming down, and we will...
Any questions?
Discuss this. No, I mean, you've feel like laid out your case pretty well. So I mean, best-case scenario is we figure out how to get you to be able to retain the property and get your demo done and build new there. We are always looking for good new infills, so we'll discuss it.
I originally bought it because my daughter is going through a divorce and needs to relocate from her husband. But with the nonsense that I've experienced, it was cheaper to rent her an apartment.
I appreciate that, and thank you for being here to talk about it, and we'll discuss it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. I'm sorry. What was your name again?
William. Last name Ward. And I am from Vancouver, Washington.
Thanks, Wayne.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Go ahead, sir.
Excuse me. I'm Wayne Bogle from Augusta, Kansas. I'm the owner of the house at 308 North Taylor, and it's on the... So I have this resolution or whatever. So anyway, that's why I'm here. I bought that house and went in and completely gutted it out, so it's down to bare studs. And we found that it's structurally sound. It's a good house. The foundation's good. And so it was my intent to get back to working on it in March. I had some, I had some, I don't know how to say it, I had some delays last year that didn't get me as far as I wanted or what you wanted. Since then, though, with, I also at the same time bought a house on Residence Street. And so with the delays that I've had, I talked to the realtor and had them put this 308 Taylor on the market so that somebody else could go in and finish it. And then I would be able to take that money and go over and get started on the house on residential. Residence, not residential. So anyway, I guess my, I guess my desire is to get that household to another buyer, which oddly enough was going to close tomorrow, but closed today somehow. I have a procedure tomorrow where they're going to put me under anesthesia, so they said I can't sign any paperwork, legal paperwork tomorrow. So the title company wanted me to come in and sign today, and then so I did that quick. And then I got thinking, well, that's a day ahead, because we were hoping to have this determination made before the closing. But anyway, so that's my situation. Like I said, I believe it's a, I had Brandon Taylor and Scott Ricker both had toured the house with me, and so they, I don't know if they reported back to you or not, but they both found the house to be in good shape and thought that it should be restored as well.
So there's now a new owner of the house?
Yes, as of today or tomorrow. I don't know how that works for sure. I don't get the money till tomorrow, but...
Your closing is the 31st of May, correct?
No, we close today. We were scheduled to close tomorrow.
I just may mention something. In talking to the owner, which is under contract to close, he presented a very detailed plan for remodeling the structure, sent me a copy of the contract for purchase. I apologize. I did see the closing date is May 31st on that.
21st. 21st.
Oh, 21st.
21st, which would be tomorrow.
And so staff is going to recommend that we not pass, you all not pass a resolution on this tonight, and we keep our eye on it and bring it back to you if there's no progress. We feel there's been some diligent effort by the prospective buyer.
To get plans in place and sort of...
By doing that, do we give them a certain timeline?
I think you just don't pass a resolution, and if it's an issue, we bring it to you again.
Is the buyer here?
I don't know the buyer, so...
Yeah, he is not. He does not live in the area.
I mean, I know his name, but I don't know him. So I don't have to hear it off.
What's his name?
Um, Jeffrey Wickers or Wickers?
Wickers, yeah.
But he understands.
Yes, and I've not spoken to him personally. The listing agent that I've been working with, um, ha- has met with, um, Scott Rickert, I believe.
I've, I've met with both real estate agents. I've met with Mr. Wickers or building professionals met with him. I've talked to him on the phone multiple times.
Okay, so who knows what he's getting into?
Very responsive. He emailed. He gives a two-page plan of his, how he's going to remodel when he's going to start.
Is there, is there a reason he's buying in El Dorado? He's not from around here. Does he own other property or?
He's got, he's got family that he's looking for the, that lives in the area, for an home.
All right, so appreciate you being here as well. And well, when we get to the resolution part, I think the, according to Scott, the recommendation is me to not pass this resolution.
Are, are you Scott?
Yep.
Oh, okay. I keep, okay, so it wasn't Scott Rickert with this, with the other. There was another guy that went through the house with.
Yeah, it was Scott Peachin. Unfortunately, he's, he's no longer with us, but yet probably.
Wasn't Scott Peachin because Scott Peachin refused to even come look at it. Cause he, he was under the impression that the floor joists were all burned out and it had knob and tube wiring in it and, and all those things. And I, when I got it gutted out, I said, would you come look at it? I said, because you'll find that it has all modern wiring in it and none of the floor joists are damaged. And, and he wouldn't come look.
But I think we, we had a meeting with you as early as, early February, talking about making some progress before this, so. So it was, was a time for me and Brandon went and looked at it in February.
Okay. Okay.
Scott, do you know if he's got contractors lined up to go or?
He's got, yes. Wants, wants to make the investment in the structure. We believe the structure's salvageable. Did not want to, uh, was worried about this resolution, obviously, and the, and what may happen, but, um, everything we asked him to provide us. In fact, if it wasn't even going to have a hearing, it's not, we would have already issued a permit. We knew he was the owner to keep going.
The, 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 the roof in what I call the addition eastern part of the house, it would just take a new trust pass, a trust package, which is the way I was going to do it, was just tear all existing trusses off, replace the top plate a couple of studs and then set the neutruses. And it should be fairly straightforward. Everything else is in really good shape. Appreciate that.
But I think that we're, you guys have any other questions on this one? Thank you for being here.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, so is there anyone else to speak during the public hearing, please? And we'll move on to the resolutions and then address those as we go. Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing. We'll get back to our agenda. So now we'll move on to agenda item number, well, ten, there's no old business. We'll move on to eleven, which is a consideration of these resolutions. Four thirty-four West Gate Springs, eleven oh eight Sheldon, three oh eight North Taylor, seven twenty-four North Topeka, six sixteen West One and eight seventeen North Washington. Are unsafe or dangerous and direct instructions be repaired or removed. The premises made safe and secure. So can we have some discussion before motion since there's going to be conversation about not recommending motions, um, a resolution on specific property?
Yeah, I just really brief the resolutions before evening. Um, we, staff has just penciled in thirty days. It's at commission's discretion. If past resolution says we need to see the commencement of repairs or the demolition of property within thirty days, it's penciled in. And then we need to see some progress. Eight seventeen North Washington is one that has taken care of itself. The property owner demolished that for us.
Okay.
So that's undone. And like I mentioned prior, three oh eight North Taylor, we feel that it's in a condition, there's a planned place for the owner to see some progress if something happens.
So seven twenty-four North Topeka. It, it sounds like we've got a property owner that is ready and willing to tear the property down. We just have some red tape for him to get through to get to that point. So is, is there a way to give an extension on that to, to hopefully help him deal with that challenges that they're having?
That's up to you guys. I mean, I think it looked like you became the owner in December of twenty twenty-three?
I do not remember the exact.
I, I was looking at.
Approximately, yes.
Yeah, and, um, so.
And, and, and the first time I visited the property, I boarded windows that were broken. I secured all the doors. I've got boarding inside as well as, for example, the screen door and the entrance door and screen door are both screwed securely. And that was the first time I visited the property and, uh, I found out that, uh, I, I went to get a demo permit and I was told I needed an engineer inspection. And there's, there's no disclosure. And, and I feel like I was wrong from the, from the very beginning on the, on the purchase. That's why I said maybe the, the city commission can, can, you know, I, I came with a solution. If, if you all can make some kind of ordinance where there has to be a, a mic new disclosure, that would be great. But the last, we did not visit the property because we literally broke into Washington.
Sure.
Uh, but we did secure it. And I'm, I'm willing to maintain, you know, for ninety days and I will have it demolished if that's the case. Otherwise, I just can sign a quick claim deed or let you all bill me and I'll say keep the property.
Right.
That's one of that.
It's a question.
Yep.
I've, I've been by this house. I know what he's talking about. And it needs to be gone. There's no doubt about that. If we given him an extension for him to pay for the demolition, is he really saving any money over what the city would charge him for demolitions?
It's, it's hard to say if we had the, um, if we would bid that out right now and have a private contractor do that? Or if the city would do that work itself? We would attempt to bill the property owners and any lien holders or any other people of interest on the title. But typically those go to a special assessment and get placed in the tracts because usually we don't have an owner sitting here in front of us. But we have, there's been a lot of homes that the city has acquired via quick claim deed, demolished them, cleaned them up and made them available to sell for, um, regardless.
Well, I'll be honest, that's the way I'm leaning.
Is that, is that lot big enough to rebuild on?
I would have to work.
With all the easements and?
It's right there on the railroad. Um, it's pretty small.
Yeah, it's not, it's not very big.
I mean, from my perspective, I, I'm just kind of looking at this as, you know, he's made an investment. And if there's a way, rather than the quick claim, if there's a way to maybe give him a little bit of an extension to try to get the property demoed and then they can move on with the property from there, I'd hate to see him just lose that investment and then just by giving the property away. So I appreciate people investing in our community and that's an opportunity to, to try to work with them. I think long-term discussion, um, amongst the commissioner with staff about addition, new policies and new regulations, new ordinance is, is probably a conversation to have. Obviously not something we can, we can whip out tonight. But that'd be my perspective. If there's a way to, within that ordinance or within the resolution on that property to, to give it a little bit of time to see if they can, if he can get his wire fraud issue figured out and then, and then demo the property. Again, just as some, as someone who's already invested in our community, maybe give him that opportunity to fulfill that investment.
I agree with what Bill's saying, but I'm just kind of curious. So if you can't get the wire fraud claim taken care of, are you planning on just walking?
No, sir. Um, I will either quick claim deed it tonight or tomorrow. Uh, I have no qualms with that. Uh, we're all adults here, you know. What's, what's twenty thousand dollars?
Well, I think it's not so much the twenty thousand dollars as I hear Bill and I, myself, I feel the same way. I feel like you've been taken advantage of and we don't really like that. And we don't want our citizens to go through that. But, you know, everybody's just got to get a feel for if you can't get the, if you're saying that you're not willing to, if this comes back and you can't get the wire fraud taken care of, then that's one issue. But if you're saying you can, regardless of what happens with the wire fraud, if you're able to do it, then I think we're willing to give you time.
I, I can actually afford it. I, I need to go back to Washington. Um, I own an origin house up there. I need to take care of stuff and get people in positions where they know how to take care of my business while I come back here again and spend, you know, seventy-two hours or, or three days, four days, maybe five to, to get a Bobcat or, or a front end loader or what have you to demo the house. I need to contact the utility company about the gas meter. So there's no chance of, of hitting the gas meter and getting blown up. I have no desire for any danger to the community. And.